Yep, I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I know you're traveling, so just so you know, do you have a phone?
Nope. Oh, no, I'm home now.
Oh, you are, okay.
Yep, we're good, thank you. I hurried back, I would not want to miss you guys.
I love to hear that.
That's right.
That's dedication.
That's right, I don't want to start off on the bad foot, you know. Guys are gonna be like, she's fired and she's out of here.
Well, it's come many times, so...
That's right.
You definitely may have some flexibility.
Well, I show that it's 5:30.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, we'll go ahead and we will start our March Planning Commission meeting. I will ask the commissioners if you've all had a chance to review the minutes from last month's meeting?
Yep.
Yes.
Were there any additions that needed to be made?
Nope.
If not, I will look for a motion to approve the minutes from our February 10th meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion's been made by Commissioner Lutz and seconded by Commissioner Norman to approve the February 10th Planning Commission meeting minutes. All those in favor, I will go ahead and I will do a roll call. Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Motion passes. Great, so now we will go to our first item agenda, looks like it is a sign petition.
Yeah, can everybody hear me okay, because I've got a microphone here too, if that would help. Are you guys okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, okay. So our first matter is a sign appeal brought by Innovative Science and Graphics regarding a property at 3rd Avenue Northwest. That property is formerly known as Reef Tyrographic. There is currently one business located at that site. It has recently been purchased and is undergoing some renovation, is my understanding. The property or that parcel is its own residential office, R.O. It's in an area close to downtown with kind of mixed zoning surrounding it, including multifamily residential district to the north, to the south, the central business district which is downtown and some expanded downtown area, and residential office district, again, R.O. To the west, similar, R.O., and then to the east, again, our downtown central business district. The petitioner is requesting to replace an existing 25-square-foot monument sign with a 48-square-foot monument sign, so almost double what the current size is. The current size is compliant with our zoning requirements in that area. The proposed sign has dimensions of 6 by 8, and the petitioner did include, I'm just gonna zoom down to the pictures of the proposed sign and... I'll try to flip that. Of the existing sign and the proposed sign. Their motivation was that they intend to have as many offices occupied in the building as possible and want to be able to advertise to the public that location of those offices. So, that's what they're estimating apparently, and then I guess they will have some additional offices, but they'll have a directory inside the door when people walk in for the ones that can't be listed on the sign. So not going as big as they, you know, could potentially to include everyone, but this is what they're proposing. Alright, I'm gonna go back to some more of the information about the... Get it? Here we go. So our ordinance is, it's pretty straightforward. This includes the entire ordinance for R.O., portion of the relevant ordinance for R.O. and B1 zones. But basically just this piece that says the total area of a freestanding sign shall not exceed 25 square feet is the relevant portion. And then, just some recommendations, our code also includes that the sign should be compatible with the surroundings pursuant to the objectives of proper design and zoning amenities, allowing and promoting conditions for meeting the sign user needs while at the same time promoting the amenable environment desired by the general public, design constructed, installed, and maintained in a manner that they do not endanger public safety or traffic safety, that they're legible and visible in the circumstances in which they are used, and that they're respectful of the reasonable rights of other advertisers whose messages are displayed. And this residential office district is typically, isn't a place where it would be typically adjacent to residential districts, and therefore the sign code does try to limit the size to reduce possible conflict with surrounding uses. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to drive by there or see what the property looks like, I don't... If anybody wanted me to pull it up on Google Earth or Google Maps, I could. I just don't have it up right now on my computer.
I have a question, do we know how tall?
Yeah, I think it was 6 by 8, so it was 8 feet tall.
Okay, so it doesn't exceed the height, it's just the square footage of the sign?
Right, no, it doesn't ex... no, the height limitation is that we... Yeah, was it 25 feet?
20 feet.
Yeah.
Holly, do we know, does the 6 by 8 footprint include the stone cap and vase, or is that just the sign portion of it?
Yeah, we included another drawing and it didn't include the whole sign.
Okay, so the total height is 8 feet then on the sign?
Yeah, yep, yep, he said it was just about double what the current sign is.
Is it located on 4th Avenue or 5th place?
On 4th Avenue.
4th Avenue.
What, okay.
Yeah, 3rd Avenue Northwest.
Yeah, it's 4th Avenue.
The other question I had is if the existing sign is lighted?
They're both lighted, yep. The existing sign though has been, I think, he said that it was... There had been something done to it, like painted over or something like that, so while it's lighted, it's dim. It just, this top portion, just the Austin piece, will be lit at night, but yeah, the rest of it will be lit, but it won't... He said it's pretty low. I don't know what the exact numbers are, but it shouldn't go off the... I mean, it shouldn't shine anywhere off the property at all.
Okay.
But yeah, it'll be a little brighter than what the existing sign is, just because the existing sign was painted over or something like that, I can't, I can't remember what the... What it, what was done to it exactly.
Can't really tell in the photo, Holly, but it looks like the backside of the sign, the next intersection, doesn't look like that would be an issue, but how close is the intersection coming this way from the sign? Is visibility an issue at all from the side street traffic?
No, it shouldn't be there, they would have to meet whatever our regular setbacks are for that zoning district.
Well, it's certainly a lot bigger and it's double the limit, but I don't, it doesn't really bother me too much. I'd rather see it like this than rather see it meet the requirement of 5 by 5 and be on a 20-foot pole.
And I guess as long as it doesn't block traffic from their parking lot or that side street. I guess I wouldn't have an issue with that then.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Nope.
Do we have anybody that would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented in front of us.
I'll second.
A motion's been made by Commissioner Norman and seconded by Commissioner Lutz to approve the sign as requested. I'll go ahead and we'll take a roll call vote, Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart? I think he was in the waiting room, Holly.
Oh, okay.
Maybe he wasn't able to hear, he wouldn't have been able to hear the discussion. Okay, so with a unanimous vote of aye, motion will carry. Next item on our agenda is, looks like a rezone proposed by the City of Austin Planning and Economic Development.
Yeah, so there is some proposed, I'll go down to the map. Redevelopment in this area to the...
Hey Holly, could you have her move closer to the microphone?
Sure.
Having a hard time hearing.
I can use the mic.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, it's probably harder with the mask on too, I do have a quiet voice. So, there is some proposed redevelopment primarily in number 4 on your map. There is a proposal to do a multifamily apartment, well, an apartment, I guess. And right now, there's a lot of blocks that are half one zone, half another zone. I mean, in kind of, in a, you know, unusual way, like, you know, like a residential office with an industrial zone designation. And I think, Mr. Byram, do you know any of the history of that? I think there was like a railroad piece, you know, so there was some industrial activity in the area at one time, and I think maybe some of that zoning was just to preserve what had existed. And then, we did do a comp plan and we updated it, but, so our future land use map kind of mirrors what was there at the time, or what we have now. But in looking at, you know, what possibilities or what potential this area might have, you know, the industrial just doesn't seem to fit at all. And some of the commercial, but, you know, I mean, so the purpose of this is just to discuss it a little bit and think about, you know, what, what could it be like if the area was overall zoned residential office versus a mix of... Let me see, I'll zoom down here to another map. Versus a mix of what we have here of commercial, multifamily, residential office, light industrial. So the residential office could encompass to some degree the B3, B2, and the R2. It does allow for offices, office-type uses. You know, a smaller retail potentially. I think we've got, I'll have to go through the definition, but the light industrial just wouldn't fit. And if, if you guys have a chance to go, you know, if you are in town and you have a chance to go around and look at that area, I would recommend it. You know, a couple of the area, a couple of the light industrial areas, if they were rezoned, could potentially have non-conforming uses. But, you know, it's possible those, those parcels aren't being used at this time, you know, potentially vacant or abandoned, or potentially some nuisance properties. I mean, in that area, there's really a mix of good and bad, kind of, and not... Yeah, and just trying to make some, some things more cohesive in there and just promote just more, more positive growth in that area and to preserve, you know, the good things that they do have by trying to look at what are some of the causes that, you know, are maybe holding this neighborhood back and how we can facilitate making it better. And then if you look on Main Street South, we have, you know, some commercial zoning designation along Main Street, which is the B2, the orange. You know, as you go into that floodplain area, which is the dashed line, you know, it really, there's really not as much, you know, I guess, commercial development expected to be in that area where we've had a lot of residential buyouts, or at least right adjacent to it. And maybe we don't really want to have actual commercial retail right up next to that. Residential, maybe an R.O., something a little less intensive could work better. And then that's the other point too, one other point is that by removing the I1, we'd be down zoning, which is taking the use to something less intensive than what it currently is. So, just something to look at. So this isn't gonna, there's no decision to make at this particular meeting. This is our future land use map, which is... Needs to be rotated. And that area, just with the light black outline, is the area that we're talking about. And so it does, again, kind of mirrors, we have commercial retail here. There is more public or green space recommendation in here because of the floodplain, although it doesn't go up as far into here as I think the green does. And then, there's still some industrial here with that blue color. And then, this little orange-black down here is Whittier, just to kind of orient you. And then, this red-black right here is the post office. We'll go back. So one thing, so if you can, so if you can give me some feedback on some things you'd like to see about this to help you decide, that would be good. Also, my plan is to come up with a list, I have to notice all the people that will be impacted. So we'll have a list of properties and property owners. And I can do like, you know, Google Earth, or maybe actually the GIS, the county GIS might be good. Helpful, it's just, you can click on it, see what it is, who owns it, just a little extra information about it. But again, yeah, what's driving this is just some redevelopment in this area. And passably, the HRA has obtained some properties over here to the east of the Seibel Center. You know, just looking for the right project. Yeah.
They have a lot at the south end too, I think in like Block 14 maybe, or somewhere down in there, they got several lots too, I think.
Yeah, this is, this is zone industrial on this end, and I think it's R.O. over here. I have to double check, but there is, I, this, I don't know if this property is used or if it's vacant. I'm not 100% sure right now, but what were you gonna say about it, Commissioner Lutz?
Well, just that I know HRA has several of those properties.
Oh, sure, yeah, they do actually.
Up on the north end and then several more on the south end. I was going through the GIS today, and I'd say, oh man, it must be close to half of those properties and those, those 14 blocks are probably rental. And a good portion of them, the ownership is out of town, in several cases even out of state, so...
Yeah, I was thinking, we do have a rent.
I think anything that...
Go ahead.
Anything that lowers, that gets us to a, to a less intense zoning in all those blocks, I think is a good idea. I think that's gonna be good going forward. I think that's all part of the old, like you said, the railroad corridor. If you look at where Roosevelt Bridge crosses 4th Street, crosses Cedar River there, there's a resident, or pedestrian bridge just to the west. That, I think, is the old railroad bridge, and it comes right up kind of where 3rd Street is now, and there used to be warehouses and a grain elevator and everything else, they're up by where Arns is.
Okay.
And it's just, yeah, anything to make that all more residential versus, you know, that old industrial leftovers. That would, I think that would be a good thing, myself.
Right, because the probability of having industrial businesses there in a flood zone, it's not gonna probably happen, logically.
Yeah, actually...
And transportation, it just doesn't make sense.
I think, so the flood zone is like right here, so this is kind of where Hardy Dream is, in Block 3. So it doesn't cover the whole thing, but no, you're right, I mean, the industrial just seems out of place.
Yeah, outdated.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, that's the most important thing to talk about tonight in preparation for next month's meeting is that the current, future land use map and the current zoning designations were driven a lot by aspects of that neighborhood that no longer exist and no longer make sense. Since we established those zoning classifications, railroads have gone, the industrial uses have faded and are now vacant. We've opened up industrial parks that are the more popular place to put industrial-type uses. So no one's gonna do that downtown again. And changes have happened to the neighborhood, its housing, its uses that should indicate an opportunity for us to think in terms of both, where would we want this to be 30 years from now, and what should it be zoned like today to get us there? You have intersections of various use types in that neighborhood. For instance, part of this is the core business district currently, but does it make sense if downtown is going to expand to go into those neighborhoods? You know, for instance, the Oakland used to have an underpass. That underpass has now been raised up to street level. Does that change what, in an ideal world, we would want to see developed on those properties that are now directly exposed to Oakland rather than sort of off the beaten path like they used to be? So I would encourage looking at GIS maps, driving the neighborhood, taking a look at what's there, taking a look at where sort of the business development is currently ending and thinking in terms of over the next 30 years, would you think that would expand? Or is there a reason, maybe a street or maybe other uses that would keep business from inching into that neighborhood? You know, I, to me, it's obvious industrial doesn't make sense here anymore. The reasons why we had industrial there are gone or rapidly fading. But high, high-intensity residential, multifamily, does that make sense as a buffer or in a particular location? Where the current low-intensity residential, what does that look like? Do you think that encouraging single-family homes to remain there makes sense? Or would encouraging a different use, again, over the next 30 years make sense? And then come armed kind of with a sense in your own mind about, if I was God and I could decide what this neighborhood looked like 30 years from now, what do I think it should look like so that we can discuss, okay, then how do we set up the future land use plan to encapsulate that dream? And then what zoning categories make sense in this neighborhood to sort of take the first step in that direction?
Yeah, and we're looking at the R.O. because it does allow for some services in that area. It's just adjacent to downtown and a major roadway, but yet, there's, there's plenty of residential in that area as well. So the R.O. seems to encompass, you know, the most logical uses that would potentially develop there or are existing there. And uses that would be complementary, or at least not in conflict with each other. I'll just go through the R.O. multifamily residence office district quick. So the purpose of the district is to restore economic value to develop sections of the city where old large states are no longer practical for single-family residency and where residential properties along major thoroughfares can be removed and replaced by residential and office buildings, modern residential office buildings. No building structure likely to be used, alter directed unless designed for one of the following. So all principal or conditionally permitted uses in R1 districts, R2 districts, except certain, like customary home occupation, which was a conditional use permit in an R1 and an R2. So it allows colleges and academic instruction, which is pretty normal in a residential area. Mortaries and funeral homes with some conditions, offices generally, studios, clubs. So some of this is still a little old and we are updating our zoning code as well. Antennas and towers not really relevant. Conditional uses, hotels, motels, tourist home, bed breakfasts. Again, these are conditional uses though, research facilities, home occupations as a conditional use, not permitted. Mining, that's not gonna be in our rezone update, or I mean, our zoning update. And then just some regular, normal accessory structures that would go along with the permitted uses.
Hey Holly, can you share any more with us about what's being proposed for Block 3?
No, 4. Block 4, this one? Yeah, I mean, we're...
Okay, 4.
Yeah, it's a proposed apartment building. Market rate apartment. I'm not sure how many units. I don't know, so it's still something that's being worked on. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, nothing's done until they start digging a hole in the ground, you know? But that's what's proposed and that's what's kind of making us take a look at this area again, although, believe me, I mean, we've been looking at this area since I started here. It was considered for the community... It was considered for the community rep center as a possible site, but that didn't happen. That's just an area that needs some attention and we have, you know, we have a few of those areas in the city. You know, and, and how do we, and right now we just have the opportunity because we're, we're kind of looking at this, this possible redevelopment on one of these blocks. And yeah, maybe, yeah, just, it just has more, maybe a little more opportunity just because it's closer to the downtown and, you know, off of Oakland. But also those are things that can maybe be a downside, not the downtown part maybe really, but you know, being closer to a busy road or. And then we have some buyouts, you know, where the, where the floodplain, you know, this area over here is becoming a little more green over time and maybe a little bit better view, you know, or usable as walking and recreation. We have more trails in that area now. Talking about doing some, maybe a, you know, more of a permanent farmer's market in the area as well, that would be up here.
Holly, you alluded to some non-conforming uses that might be still there. Do you know what those are offhand?
No, I need to go through and mark them out for sure. You can kind of see, so this, let me look quick at our, so it would be these, basically these properties here. Not all of them would be non-conforming in R O though. It's possible that some of them would work. So, okay, so this one's all R O, so that's fine. There's, so there's just some industrial down here, this side, and then these first two blocks, so. So these two down here and then over here. I just need to check on those. I know this one is in pretty, this one's in pretty bad shape right here. Definitely not being cared for. I don't think we'll get any response from that person at all. And then I believe there's a couple houses right here. There is the fire safety place, I think is right here. And that would fit in the R O, that would be fine. This property, I don't know if it's occupied or not. Just need to, yeah, check on that. So there'll be some stuff that I'll be compiling and I'll try to get it out to you guys as soon as I can. But yeah, if you, if you wanna take any initiative and the Maurer County, Maurer County has a G I S map. I'll send you the link, I'll send you all the link to it. And if you have any trouble getting on it, it sounds like Commissioner Lutz, you've already been on there, right?
Yeah, it's pretty easy to use.
Yeah, and that, that'll give you information about the, at least the property owner. I think it also gives you some tax information about what its tax category might be. But yeah, so just focus, if you wanna just focus on the areas that are not currently zoned R O. And how they, you know, how they would fit into if, if all of them were R O versus, so just these essentially and this over here. So just kind of, you know, kind of complete the just a little bit of a just non-continuity, you know, there's, it would create some continuity in the area. Just seems very chopped up and unusual, it's just unusual.
And Holly, sorry, you notify all the, everybody in that area, right? You send out a letter, what, I mean, what happens?
Just the ones that would be actually rezoned, I think, right? Lots of double check, but I'm pretty much sure just the ones.
Okay.
So, um. We would just send them a notice that actually, yeah, so once I get, I'm trying to think about how to do that exactly. So once I get the list together. Yeah, I'll probably, I mean, I will for sure send them a notice that's required by law. But whatever, what other outreach we do, it's just kind of a tight timeline.
Yep.
Yeah, some extra time would be nice, but you know, we could have like a, potentially have a meeting, you know, prior to the planning commission meeting, just with me to talk about it. Trying to think of how much time I have. We're already working on the list.
Well, what kind of, right, but what kind of response do you expect to have? I mean, nobody's gonna respond, like you said, one, one's a rental and he's not gonna respond, so then his zoning may change.
I think there's gonna be very little response, but I don't know that.
Okay.
And sometimes one person.
Sure, sure.
You know, can get the whole neighborhood activated if they're opposing it.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm not entirely sure what kind of response we'll get. So the, the biggest argument is, you know, so it's a down zone, so it really benefits the homes that are existing there.
Okay.
You know, with regard to the, you know, the commercial and the industrial, but it I mean, you could argue that maybe commercial properties were more, it felt like it could be developed commercially, but you know, I mean.
Right.
Is that really likely? I don't think so.
Right, is that realistic?
Yeah, I don't think that's realistic. And then the other issue is potentially the non-conforming uses with the I one.
Yep.
It'd get harder for them to invest in their properties if it's not zoned properly. You know, if they're not, if they're industrial use in a, in an R O district, they're non-conforming. Like, it'll make them harder, it'll make it harder for them to invest in that, that property. Because you can't increase a non-conformity. But you could, you could do something else with it. Doesn't mean there's nothing you can do with it. You could, I mean, you could sell it for something else or you could use it as an office. It could be, you know, renovated for some other use that would fit within the R O district. So it's not that there's nothing they can do with it. Although I think in some instances, a couple of those properties have been totally abandoned. Or were.
Sure. Okay.
But yeah, no, good question. I'm still thinking about that. This, I think this project's been in the works for quite some time, but the question about
Yeah.
maybe looking at rezoning a wider swath was, you know, sort of just discussed. But, but again, as I noted earlier, it's not like we haven't thought about this area for years.
A long time, absolutely.
And how will we, you know, how can we, you know, sort of give it a jumpstart and you know, what, what are the things that currently are there that, that are maybe again, holding it back?
Yep.
And what are the things there that are good, you know, that we want to, you know, maybe magnify or, you know, focus on? And minimize the things that, that aren't just good, maximize the things that are good. Any other questions? Do you have anything to add?
Hey Holly, just out of curiosity, just a couple blocks west of that B, or that first block one. Is that old, I call it the old Piggly Wiggly property. That's where the new public TV station, I think, was gonna be built. Is that still active or what's up with that project?
Yes, it's active, but Mr. Byer will probably know more about it.
Yeah, that site is still K S M Q's new facility. The state provided bonding money to construct that. The city's going to construct and own that. It's in the design stage and the final document stage with the state bonding and, and other things. I would expect to see them break ground sometime this spring, early summer. So hopefully if everything stays on track, that's what will happen. I think.
Yeah, we've seen designs and we've heard from the architects and
Yeah.
I think we recently heard from maybe one of the contractors, so yeah, it definitely seems to be gearing up.
I think city staff is meeting with state staff yet this week on what they call an implementation meeting, just so that everybody knows all the requirements that go along with bonding money, to make sure that when contractors are paid, it's properly accounted for, things like that. So there's lots of hoops to jump through, but that project is still rolling forward.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
Thank you.
It's hard to maintain that level of excitement when it goes on for such a long time, but it'll be pretty, pretty amazing when it's completed. So yeah, definitely some good things happening in that general area.
So Holly, what are our next steps? You'll send out a link to the county's G I S map for us and we should get familiar with that area of town?
Yeah.
Businesses or buildings that are in that neighborhood?
Yeah, and I'll send you a list of considerations that we talked about previously with rezones. Not all of you have been involved with that. But we consider the consistency of the proposed zoning with the goals, policies and future land use map of a comprehensive plan. So I would go through the comprehensive plan and pull out things that, that support that rezoning. The compatibility of the site with the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district, so kind of what I just read through. I might include maybe what we're proposing for going forward with the R O zone too. But the compatibility of all the potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district with the surrounding uses and zoning in terms of, you know, impacts on the environment density, the kind of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, potential influence on property values. The capacity of existing infrastructure and services to accommodate the uses permitted in the requested district without compromising the health, safety, welfare of the residents or the existing, well, yeah, the residents. Whether the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district will cause detrimental impacts, including environmental impacts, including water runoff, water pollution, air pollution. You know, in this instance, it would be down zoning, so those would be less likely across that area. That the boundaries of the requested zoning district are sufficient to meet the dimensional regulations for the proposed zoning district, which in this instance, it's not applicable to every block except for block four. So we just make sure that the project would be able to meet the setbacks with the current zoning district is what that applies to. And then the ability of the applicant to stress by name, again, specific requirements of the zoning district required, which you know, is partially applicable here on that block four, but you know, would be, future projects would be subject to that zoning designation, so does it make sense? Is that something that, that that zoning setbacks and size regulations would accommodate in a positive way in this area? Then I'll send you, and I'll send you that list. So you can contemplate those things and then, if you wanna look through the, the comprehensive plan, you're welcome to. I can send a link to that as well, but I will specifically pull out items that, I know we have our goals and policies that support more housing. And, you know, as Mr. Byer mentioned, you know, having our industrial in the right places. And we have created specific areas for that versus, you know, the, the small slabs that are located in this section or this particular area. But yeah, if you wanna, yeah, if you wanna just, yeah, I think it's really helpful. It's actually really helpful to me as well. Just driving around and seeing. It doesn't take long. I mean, it looks kind of big on the map, but it's not really very big. But you kind of blink and you're like, oh, I'm on Main Street, you know, from Fourth Street to Main Street. It goes pretty quick. But, yeah, just if there's anything that, you know, is a concern, you can certainly contact me prior to our next meeting. If you have any additional questions, I certainly welcome it. You know, you all think of things that I don't necessarily think of, you know, which makes it, you know, super helpful to have people from varying backgrounds and experience. So yeah, just if you can kind of delve into the area as much as you can or wish to and, you know, let me know how you feel and then you know, as far as discussion as a group, you know, just beware of the, you know, the public meeting laws that we spoke about. You know, we, we don't wanna have a forum and be discussing items that may seem like a decision, you know, prior to our actual scheduled meeting. Any question, any other questions? Okay. So that's just a discussion, so no decisions necessary at this point.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else they would like to add or share? If not, I will look for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
And that was who, I'm sorry?
Commissioner Lindberg.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I also. Who was that?
Commissioner Norman.
Sounded like two people.
You just pick, how did that sound?
But I didn't hear the other person.
Oh, I think we both spoke at the same time, Commissioner Norman.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Commissioner Lindberg, seconded by Commissioner Norman to adjourn the meeting. We'll go through a roll call vote. Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Cloner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz? Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Thank you, aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
With the unanimous vote of aye, motion carries and meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.